There you go.
Hey, we're on. All right, good morning. Welcome to our special session. Yeah, we're streamed. This is our Marshall County Board of Supervisors at a meeting in a special session on the seventeenth day of March twenty fifteen at nine AM on the northeast corner, third floor of the courthouse, with two members present. I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second that. Rule call, please.
Grayman Bower.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, second item is the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from special session of March three, twenty fifteen.
I motion that we approve the minutes as printed.
I'll second that. Rule call, please.
Grayman Bower.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the order of the day, the item number three, the was from Sheriff's Office, Ted Comanches, County Sheriff, and we've got, we just, we kinda wanted to call this meeting with Ted, and we got Mr. John Haney in here with us also to talk about, a little bit about security, courthouse security. So Sheriff, I'll just turn it over to you. We'll get started, and I guess we're trying to, we're, the Board of Supervisors are trying to take up that proactive position, you know, so you guys were in here for your comments, so.
One of the things we did this year is, is we currently got one part-time officer, Jack McAllister, for courthouse security. We've seen good results. There's been a lot of things that he's been extremely proactive at since, since being here, and has been a step up since our last person. We talked at length with Ted during the budgeting process that courthouse security was one of our thoughts we needed to expand on. You know, there's not everybody that walks through our front doors has the best interests in mind of the general public. It's not only our employees that deserve this, the security, but the guests and the people that are coming to, to the courthouse to do their business deserve to be in a protected environment. We've got the court system here. We authorized in our budget this year, John, for two additional part-time individuals through, through Ted's office for expanded courthouse security, and we've also made requests to the state legislature for a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars annual funding for each county. So, that being said, that kinda gives you an idea of what, where we've done and what we've done, and we'll go from there.
Well, first off, I want to thank you for calling the meeting.
I guess I put this over your.
Lisa, stick her head in the door.
Okay. I want to thank you for calling the meeting today. It's, it's an important issue that we've looked at for a number of years. Let me go back a little bit in time. About fifteen years ago, Judge Peterson met with a group of individuals from the courthouse with this very concern in mind. At that particular time, of course, nothing happens for nothing, so there has to be an investment. At that particular time, there was no residual monies generated from traffic fines, for instance, for citations that are issued. At that particular time, there was minimal, at best, funds generated from the sentencing of inmates into the county jail from within the county, not who we housed from outside. So, the concern that we had at that time is, how can we at least put a face on it? If you go back long ways, twenty-five plus years before I was sheriff, actually thirty years, there was a bailiff system that had an armed bailiff upstairs all the time. Those individuals were up there for, for a number of years, they were assigned to the district court, and they pretty much just, if you will, powsed through the courthouse in the third and fourth and fifth floors. Because of some changes that occurred to the district court level, those bailiffs became court attendants, and that monies were cut back. The court attendants have no obligation or requirements to be trained adequately in the areas of self-defense or protective court services. So, basically, it was kinda like we're gonna trust society. You know, just thinking about that in the outside, it's a valid thing we should be able to do in America, trust society. The sad thing about it is, we no longer are Marshall County-wide or Iowa-wide. We live in a transient society that has individuals flowing across our state lines and across our, our country's borders. And with that comes certain threats. There's also been a change in the societal base that, that shows us that there's a lot of violence out there today. There's a lot of individuals who are much more distraught today than they ever were in the past. Yes, in the sixties, we had the Black Panther Movement and other radical organizations out there, the KKK, and groups who would flare up in small, usually southern or, or west coast areas. But you knew about those, and the FBI was on top of those. Today, it's much broader than that scope. Today, we have individuals who are citizens within our own county, who are distraught with what the board does, what the assessors do, what the county attorney does, what the sheriff does. They don't like the decisions that we make. They're individuals who, who feel that they, they don't have to follow rules, and they're a greater number than we've ever had before. And it's not just in Marshall County, it's throughout the state of Iowa. And I know when David mentioned before that there was a legislative meeting down at the Capitol with the hopes of generating a hundred thousand dollars per county, that doesn't go just to help us, it goes to help guys like, like John here. The judges are put behind the eight ball on this, because they have requirements to make decisions, and they need to be protected. The last few years, with, originally with Rich Collins, who was orig, was brought up to be just a Band-Aid to carry us over till we went to full-time, and went to one look, one entrance, clear back when Rich started, never, nothing evolved from that. Rich stayed up there, and basically, by his presence, and because people knew Rich, it was kinda the old-school environment, and it took care of the problem. Richard retired, and we were lucky enough to bring Jack on board. Jack McAllister, for those who are listening, was the chief of police, acting chief of police in Marshalltown. Jack and I went to the academy together. Jack is very well-trained, a very, very solid individual. I trust in him fully. But one part-time person doing thirty hours a week just can't do the job adequately. Back fifteen years ago, we began a process of phases, at least we designed and laid it out. We had the US Marshal Service do an assessment, do an overview. We didn't pay for the full assessment, we did, basically, we did their pony program. And everything that they indicated to us, we needed one point of entry. That's costly. Initially, we went up against the, the individuals who felt that we have to maintain the integrity of the heritage of this courthouse. So, rebuilding it to have one entrance just wasn't something that was gonna be palatable for the community. Again, times have changed since then. So, whereas that still remains an ultimate goal, one point of entry for the courthouse, magnetrometers, x-ray, I think you'll see that across the country. You see it already beginning to occur. But that does not come without a substantial increase in costs. Just for us alone here, even if we had the three part-timers on, even if we had the three part-timers on, you're looking at about a two-hundred thousand dollar increase, just to bring on, the initial startup of, of bringing on the adequate full-time staff, and the magnetrometers, and the x-ray machines. After that, you're looking at sustaining of probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what I'm going to talk to you about today. So, before we can get to that high-dollar, high-end, and hopefully, with the help of the state, because frankly, let's get serious here, for the county taxpayers carrying a great burden of the states anyway. And I don't mean that in any other sense other than if you think, if you think about the number of square feet that, that the state takes up today with its clerk's office, well, with its courtrooms, with its courts, with its judges' offices, you know, a substantial amount of this courthouse goes to them now, by the way, which it should do. This is the courthouse. I remember Judge Peterson telling me that one time. We had a discussion, he took the time to say, "Don't forget, this doesn't say Sheriff's House, this doesn't say Board's House."
Well, we remind you every week, it doesn't say the Sheriff's House.
Well, it doesn't say Board's House either. It specifically says Court's House on the front. I learned that a long time ago. The thing about it is, if we were, the argument could be made to the state that says simply this, if we were to eliminate all the state's obligations in this building, we could easily bring back in all the rental space that we have outside that are, is county business. Well, we're not gonna get into that, it's not realistic. So, with that said, I appreciate you guys working with us in the next phase. I am not going to go into particulars of the security of that, or the portions of that phase in security in a public forum, because it would be counterproductive to the well-being of the employees, to the individuals, and to the citizens who come in and out of this building on a daily basis. But I will say this in open form. The next phase involves a couple things that we're going to implement. We're first going to go out and bring on two more certified individuals in a part-time basis. Now, here's a problem we're running, running across. I believe Jack makes just over fifteen bucks an hour. I'm not gonna lie to you guys. That is just not enticing to individuals who are making a retirement of seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year, who've worked thirty or forty years. It's not enticing to people who are currently employed full-time, making twenty to twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour, saying, "Would you work with us part-time for fifteen?" Now, what's, what's the difference in that? I would, I would submit to you that we need to at least have a goal of going to about seventeen to seventeen-fifty an hour down the road for the part-time help. Keep in mind, they have no benefits other than the, the Ipers, it's a restricted Ipers amount that we pay.
Well, they also, they also get vacation.
Yeah, they get vacation, but the point of the matter is, is that we can work vacation around, don't forget, and they get no payout at that vacation at the end, if they leave us. So, they get, they can get the payout, we can work that vacation around current manpower. It's not like a full-time position where you assign a twenty-four-seven shift like we do in the Sheriff's Office, where we have to cover that shift. There's a little bit difference in doing it in the courthouse. But my point is, is that I think we need to look at the possibility of doing an increase. And I'm not saying now, by the way, I'm just saying, pardon this, this next phase. That'll help us entice other people to come here. Upon becoming full, and that's with the three part-time positions, that allows us to dedicate ninety hours a week to the, to the courthouse. I'm going to request that we do an assessment of, of actual hours that the offices are open, and based on those hours that the offices are open, and, and considering the fact that we have electronic control of our doors today, that the courthouse doesn't open up any sooner than that. Case in point, let me just give you a for instance. If the courthouse is open to eight to four-thirty, and I'm talking about the offices of courthouse, then there's no reason that the exterior, exterior doors should be open beyond eight to four-thirty. Staff is given either a code or a key fob that they can get access anytime they want. So, the point of the matter is, we need for you as a board to work with the elected heads and the appointed heads, who, the appointed heads being underneath you guys as employees, those individuals, to make it strict policy for the staffs that they don't allow citizens in before eight o'clock. So, if they're coming to work at seven, they don't allow that citizen in here. Because to do so is a breach of security here, and that is, is a cause for disciplinary action. Another part of that policy is, is if an individual has their children here, if an individual has their spouse here, if an individual has maybe set up a meeting with a class to visit at seven AM, whatever, that they secure the names and confirmation of who those individuals are in advance. And at least, at the very least, that they share the fact of how many people they'll have here, where they're from, general terms, with our staff, our security staff. And that they retain in their own possession the names of these individuals in case A, if something happens, if Obama's to go off in the courthouse, so we know who's maybe here. Because we invited them here, I think we incur a certain liability in cases, again, of a tour or something. And also, so that we take into consideration the fact that we wanna be able to vet a little bit better who is coming in our, inside the walls. We want this to be, remain the citizens' courthouse. We want to remind ourselves on a daily basis that the citizens should have a free right to this. But you know, the same thing holds for anything else. You, you know, citizens drive, but they have to do it within a series of guidelines and rules. So, all we're doing is setting up some rules for those citizens to come here. Now, I would recommend that upon completion of staffing, that we also lock down and secure the north door, and leave that door for now, during this phase, for exit only. Not emergency exit, but for exit only. Now, we understand firmly that, that the public could go out that door and let somebody in. All right, we understand that. And we hope that we have cameras in, in location that'll be able to at least see who that person is. But by doing that, we're gonna begin to educate the populace that entering into the building really isn't that direction. It's gonna be, and I would suggest from the south loop area, the south door entrance. That would actually help us in the future as we go into the next phase, if we choose to do so, all right? Now, keep in mind, if we go into a one-point-of-entry phase, where we have one entrance into the facility, we are now going, going to have to look at, and by the way, not this phase, but in the future, we're gonna have to look at magnetrometers and packaging, x-ray. That's pretty costly. But at least that by that point, we're dealing with just that issue, not the fact that we're now forcing people to come in from the south.
We currently have two metal detectors, correct?
Yeah, the, the magnetrometers that we have sadly are, well, they were given to us by Polk County. Polk County gave those to us when they updated their courthouse, and I might add, that's when Bob Rice was sheriff. Bob retired in two thousand, that would've been about nineteen ninety-seven, as I recall. So, so, and, and they do have their, I don't, without going into, into public, they do have their issues. We also have hand search magnetrometers, and we also have palm search magnetrometers that look like a glove. So, if I go up and I touch him like this, if I see him, if I hold my hand here, it actually vibrates in my hand, and it looks like a glove. So, I mean, people have seen these things hanging around, so we have some things like that, some devices like that. Doesn't mean that, that they wouldn't work downstairs, but I think that as we're, as we go into that next phase, we wanna go ahead and develop a plan for escalation there.
Well, I would say, Ted, from both our budget talks and, and our talks that the board has had, not only with you, but amongst ourselves with security issues, that our intent is to go to a single entrance eventually. We'd like to hear your, your plans, and obviously, we're not gonna necessarily make these in public, but we'd like to see something.
Absolutely.
Get the staffing involved, and, and Denny's terms are, we're, we're gonna use this in, in baby steps. But yeah, we've, we've gotta take a start.
Good.
We're gonna continue to be very vocal on pursuing state aid with this.
Good. And that's important. And I think if the public, if, if five people are listening right now, I ask that the public consider that, and they talk to our senators and our representatives for the state of Iowa, and just bring it to their attention. Senator Siders, who's also deputy sheriff underneath myself and, and our agency, is involved in, is I believe the head of the judiciary.
Yes.
So, so Steve is in a position to bring firsthand knowledge to that group. Mark Smith is a longtime representative, you know, that we need to think about too, and Mark is right here in Marshalltown. So, just those two alone, for instance, are important. If I can just move off, it's, it's not really moving off topic, but Judge Haney submitted a letter to us, and, and in his letter, he was very articulate with the concerns that, that it has had at the state level, that's been brought up by the state judiciary, and at their district court level, and frankly, here in, in our, in our facility as well. He articulated the need. And I'm really proud to say that most of the things in his letter, we actually are doing already. And, or we have planned for completion this year. So, that's a good thing about that, John, as far as the majority of that. That doesn't mean that we, we have to stop there. We're continuously evaluating that. Jack is very good at that. Of course, you know, being an administrative head that he was, Jack communicates very well with things he sees, concerns he has, he does the assessments that he does, it's phenomenal. We just received our accreditation through the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement, REACRED. And part of that is bringing these professional evaluators in. And they met with Jack, and they went through what Jack's daily routine was and that, and they gave him very high marks for that. You know, they, they understand that we're limited by budget, and CLIA, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, is an international body of professionals who does constant court evaluations, and based on issues at a time, and training as necessary. And, but they also are realist in understanding we have budgets, and we just can't print money. We're not the federal government, we can't print more money. So, so with that being said, they understand that we have to work within a tight budget. They were very, very, I, I'm proud to say they were very impressed with what we do. But that was boistered by what we told them about our next phase, that you and I and, and Denny, we've all talked about, which you've mentioned here today. So, it's important that we move forward with that. Let me go on a little bit further here. We'll bring on these three part-time individuals. By the way, there's a possibility of us looking at, looking at this too, and, and saying, "Maybe we'll have more than three." The key is ninety hours. So, my point is, is that maybe we'll bring on some current full-time personnel who will fill in for five hours here, ten hours here, but we'll have them trained to fill in for those days that somebody's off, you know?
At what wage level?
Same, it'd be the same wage level. Here, here's the point, these individuals will still be employees, but they really would be no different than what, for instance, the county, you know, the, the road crew does, and they bring in people seasonally. I'm not saying we need that, but if we can't get the three people that we have, you gotta understand, when a person works thirty or forty years in this line of work, and works shifts that we do, and puts up with the stress that we do, and goes ahead and holds the hands of people and they die, and delivers babies, and that's absolutely true, I've done all of those things myself, and so has my staff, you get kinda to the point that you, you, you really don't know if you wanna continue it. That if, gosh, if I wanted to continue seeing what we're seeing today, I probably would've stayed full-time. So, somehow we have to come over that. Now, somebody who already is full-time, who may be in their off-hours comes in or whatever, we gotta keep the door open for, that's all I'm saying. It's not the ideal thing, it's not what I wanna see. Because I think having somebody on staff, like a Jack, allows them to understand personnel, and understand the work, workings of the courthouse and such. I'm just saying that we wanna stay broad in that scope.
And I know, Ted, you're, you're looking at the ninety-hour limit, which I, I kinda agree at this, on this point. But I al, also, you, you will have the flexibility with those three individuals, that if we have a major trial, you know, maybe at one time we'll have all three of them up here. And, and my point is, yesterday Supervisor Patton and I were, were coming in the building, and there was four folks coming in with the orange suits, the leg shackles, and you, you actually had two deputies here with them. And, you know, you're gonna know when that's gonna, when they're gonna come up to the courthouse, and so we protect the court systems and so on, is that the day we have maybe three? And maybe it's a high-profile.
No, absolutely.
You know, and you're gonna be able to judge that, and maybe there's days when we only need one here.
Yeah, you know, let, let's keep in mind, Denny. We have rocket docket, we have tax time, we have a lot of issues that are higher risk besides the normal jury trials and trials we talk about. So, there's going to be, there is a need. Today, there is a need. Frankly, we get a lot out of Jack, and we give Jack the flexibility to kinda work around that as much as possible. But it's very difficult. It's very difficult. Now, he can go over thirty hours. I, you know, there's a misnomer here that says he can't go over thirty hours. That's not true. He cannot be scheduled, regularly scheduled for over thirty hours. So, if this particular week, we happen to have a murder trial, maybe we pay him forty hours. That doesn't mean we reduce him next week.
Right.
The key here is that he can't regularly be scheduled for over that minimum of.
And there, the flexibility comes into play when he takes off at one o'clock in the afternoon, and you don't come at ten o'clock the next morning, 'cause he knows there's nothing that's.
And Jack is very good. If he's gonna be, if he's leaving, he sends us an email.
Absolutely.
"I'm outta here at this time of day." We know exactly when Jack is in the building at all times.
Now, you need to understand something. If we go to these man-hours, we will have a staff on here all the time, from the time the doors open, unlock, to times they close. And they'll be here a half hour after closing, because they will go through the courthouse. We either do this right, or we don't do it at all. That's the whole point here, okay? So, I'm not gonna go ahead and commit my staff or, or, or accept the obligation of the county to make this a secure perimeter without really making it a secure perimeter. Now, again, I'm talking about, once we get all three on and get them trained, we have to migrate into that now. Frankly, I, I don't even feel comfortable talking about some of those things now in a public forum, if a bad guy's listening.
Well, we don't need to do that, but what we as supervisors would like to see from you, Ted, is a, is a legitimate written-out plan.
Absolutely.
In steps, in phases, that we start with, with the three part-timers, and we work with to our ending conclusion. I think what we need to do is not only with the three of us, you coming from the Sheriff's Department, but Judge, we're gonna lean on you a little bit also. We're gonna request that you get ahold of Chief Justice Cady, and say, "Hey, this is, this is a statewide issue. We can't wait for something to happen, and then turn around and have the burden on our shoulders that there is a death, or there is an injury. We, we, we can't do that. I don't want that on my shoulders, and I don't believe anybody else does either." But this is approach we need to take from the judicial end of it, we need to take from the legislative end of it, and also our own county budget.
In that regard, I think, if you listen, if you listen to Justice Cady's State of the Judiciary before the legislature this year, one of the five main points he brought up was indeed courthouse security.
Yep.
The emphasis that the judicial branch wants to put on courthouse security as a goal. And obviously, we all know the financial constraints that are associated with that, but I think the impetus for my letter to the board and the sheriff was, stemmed from multiple things. First of all, I, I had the opportunity to serve as magistrate for seven years, and I can tell you, between the magistrate court system, your clerk of courts, and probably your treasurer's office, those offices probably are the face of this courthouse to ninety-nine percent of the public citizens who travel through these doors. And Justice Cady emphasized the importance of public access in conjunction with safety, but I can tell you, the high-profile cases.
They went to a microphone, I'm sorry.
The high-profile cases, of course, have, usually have great security, but I think as the sheriff has indicated, it is typically a situation where we have a child support custody, or a child support hearing day, where you have individuals who are upset and volatile in the court system, somebody who is upset about the payment of their property taxes down in the treasurer's office, somebody who may be upset with the licensing fees associated with licensing a motor vehicle, or a change that may have taken place, somebody who's paying a fine up at the clerk of courts office, or has had their tax refund held because they failed to pay a fine or some other obligation that they have. And these are the folks that your employees cross paths with every day. And I, I, I think my letter to you, I, I didn't wanna take away from the security measures that are already in place. We do have a number, I, I have the opportunity to work in many counties in the second judicial district, now that I, I work as a full-time employee, as a district court judge. And our security here in Marshall County is by far better than many of the rural counties that I walk into, and have absolutely no security, and people can walk back into judicial chambers or just about anywhere else without any restrictions. My, my point is that, and my hope is, and I think Justice Cady put the emphasis in his State of the Judiciary speech, that we need to make it a priority. And it, it is a matter of how we prioritize our funding and whether we see this as a priority or not, because we all hear about the horror stories. They happen in schools, they happen in churches, they happen in courthouses, and unfortunately, our soc, society has changed in a lot of respects, and, and things can be more dangerous and volatile, and certainly, we get that here. And, and I have to commend Jack McAllister for being here. Only thirty hours a week, Jack is mobile, he, he's in every department, he coordinates schedules, he knows people, he knows volatile people, he knows how to quell situations. We submitted our security reports to the judicial branch recently, and there were very few security issues in the Marshall County courthouse, but I think that was part and parcel of Jack's proactive approach. Just having him physically present and knowing when there are volatile situations, magistrate court when there's initial appearances, mental health hearings, downstairs when these other offices in the courthouse that aren't even related to the judicial branch are busy or have volatile people, and he creates good relationships with not only department heads, but also the line staffer who are here every day. All those things are important, and I hope the additional part-time employees will follow Jack's lead. I suspect they will.
I'm sure they will.
We all need to know them. But my, my point is, just as one of the members of the judicial branch who works here at the courthouse, is we want the Board of Supervisors and the Sheriff's Office to hopefully prioritize this issue. Again, as I said in my correspondence to you, I don't think it's an if, I think it's a when. People, people do get volatile, and, and there will be volatile situations. But if we can be proactive and get ahead of the curve as opposed to wait till a tragedy occurs, I, I think we'll all sleep much better.
But when, in, when you have your discussions and you, and you meet with the judiciary people, something as simple as adding some dollars to some fines that can go towards this program, let's let the actual people that are causing these issues do a little bit of the payment. Maybe you could suggest to, to Chief Justice Cady that the program that our attorney runs with the collections of, of fines, that we get a higher percentage of that. We, we currently get to keep twelve percent. If that was to go to fifteen to eighteen percent rather than twelve percent, that could be kept in our county, our local county attorney's fund. We could literally almost fund this courthouse security out of that fund, and that fund does have certain leeways that. And that fund does have certain leeways that, that would allow us to use those monies for it. And we can keep these improvements off the backs of the, the property taxpayers.
So where's our next, where's our next direction on these baby steps, Ted? Are you, since we have kind of authorized that, to them two extra deputies?
One other thing, you had mentioned about securing the environment before eight and after four-thirty. With, and, and we do currently have locks on the doors. You need to be aware, though, if there is a jury trial actually occurring, the courthouse has to be open and accessible to the public. So if a jury happens to be convened or deliberating, or a trial is running beyond that four-thirty hour, the public has to have, have access by code to the courthouse during that time. So if we have a jury convened and deliberating at eight o'clock on a Friday evening, the courthouse does indeed have to be open and accessible to the public. And I've run into that in several counties.
How do they handle that?
Often, they actually put a block in the door and a sign on the door because they have automatic locks.
I see.
And notify the public that the courthouse is indeed open. So, but it's statutory, it's required by law. So there're gonna be situations where that may indeed occur, where you can't just lock the doors at four-thirty if there's an active trial.
And you know, this is gonna take cooperation and communication with everybody, and that's just gonna be part of the learning process.
Exactly. But I, I wanted to point that out.
Would they coordinate that with the sheriffs?
I think it would make very good sense to coordinate that with the security staff, either Jack or whoever's working in the courthouse if we have additional new part-time staff onboard, just part of the communication.
It's like anything, communication is the key to all this. I mean, absolutely. Making, making it work.
One of the things that you need to keep in mind, what I said originally, was the fact that, that when we move to our three-person staff, secure perimeter is gonna be essential. So that means also that these, these late-night trials, which don't happen very often, I might say. First off, if it's anything criminal, we're here anyway. If it's anything civil, we aren't necessarily here. Although I think Jack likes to stay here as late as he can. He does drive it into the afternoons at least. We don't have many civil trials that go into the evenings, I don't think. So, but anything criminal, we are here anyway because we have inmates here. We have most people here, you know. So, and, and those are easily things that can be adjusted because they're electronic. We can override that. And, and again, one of the things they'd have to do is they'd have to make sure that they went and they, they checked the entire perimeter. You know, went, went through the entire facility and made sure that it was clear and clean before it's, it's finally secured. That's gonna be something that's gonna be essential, because otherwise, you know, just as good as I do, the first thing that's gonna happen. Somebody's gonna see this big security thing and this big new investment, and they're gonna say, we're gonna challenge it, we're gonna get in it, we're gonna vandalize, or we're gonna do something stupid. So I just simply say that it's, it's won't be real time-consuming, but it's, it's gonna be a part of the master plan. Getting back to what you said, did you have anything else to add? I'm sorry. Getting back to what you said before, Dennis, baby steps. Bringing on the right people. That's the first thing. Making sure that we implement with those people, I really, Jack and I have talked about some of this now already in advance. When we bring on a second person, we'll begin to, to narrow things down, probably shut down, make a public notice, you'll have to publish it. We'll have to publish it about the, the north door entrance, some of those type of things. And then the reason we're doing it is for safety. Make that, make that the emphasis of the, of the notification, to, to keep the citizens safe and the employees safe. I also, I brought with you, and I'll give you guys this, this, there are very few organizations who, and there's three of them here, just so you all three can have them. I'll explain what this is in a second. Very few organizations who today handle south, corporates, or, excuse me, court security. There are some private individuals, but it's quite costly. We're gonna then send Jack and whoever we bring onboard to the courthouse security training. It's about two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars training and cost. It's a two-day thing. I, I see that the National Sheriff Association's next segment is only up through June of fifteen, but I've been in touch with those people. This is a program that, that I actually was part of when I was on the Standards, Ethics, and Training Committee Chair for the National Sheriff Association that we, we began. You'll also see, don't let the fifty-nine-hundred dollars charged for flat classes. That's if we sponsored a class. That's what it costs. We're not doing that. It's like two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars to have the people trained. What these things do is this does, gives assurance that the individual understands what to look for. Gives us an opportunity to go ahead and, and address the real reason for this. Don't kid yourselves, and don't, we can't play politics on this and play games. We have to accept the fact that we're doing this because of the potential for litigation based on the fact that the county failed to keep people safe. That's really what it comes down to. Yes, losing someone is, is, is a dire importance. But the thousands and thousands of dollars and impact that would cost the county for, for, you know, if an officer gets killed, what it costs for that. If a staffer gets killed, the thousands of dollars replacing that staffer, there's monies involved too in it. So, so the fact of spending some money in upfront to make sure that we, we narrow down is really, it, it's really well worthwhile in it. Getting these people onboard. The other thing is, if you look down at the bottom, court security assessments. Once we have our people onboard, we have our full security plan set, we have our, by the way, we have a, a, a current warning device, a company is gonna be onboard here, I think next week, if I'm not mistaken, to go through our, our existing system, which frankly, can't get parts for anymore. We've just found that out. So, anyway, so we're, there's things like that, that we're gonna continue to be built into it. And ultimately, we'll go ahead and, and once we get set up, we'll have National Sheriff Association send in a staff of trained professionals in courthouse security to come onboard and do an assessment of where we're at and what we feel, and see what they feel we should go next step and give them, give them our ideals. That's probably two years away for that onsite assessment. Again, I, I wanna get the staff onboard. So bring on the staff, secure the perimeter. Relocate or readjust the door at times, making sure that there's policy set in place for personnel to understand that they gotta, have ownership in this, responsibility in this. Then we need to sit down and we need to discuss as a board other things. Do we want to limit weapons into the courthouse? Do we want to limit whose armed staff in the courthouse?
Let me just stop you there.
Go ahead, please.
How do we control that if, if he's got a permit, if he's got a permit to carry and we, we allow no weapons in the courthouse?
It's absolutely simple. You could, you can dictate.
You're not gonna, but you're not gonna tell me that I can't get in here. I've got a license to carry it.
Yeah, you can. This is private property.
That's where we're gonna.
Hold on, hold on.
You know, but that's where we're gonna run into some.
I understand that totally, and I'm not saying we should limit it. I'm saying that these are discussions we have to have. Now, one of the things that you gotta keep in mind, the courthouse is actually private property when it comes to policy development. Is it owned by the people? Absolutely. But so is the highways. The highways are owned by the people. But yet, are there not rules? Don't they have to pay to have access to it? Don't they have to pay to have, to have licenses, and don't they have to follow rules? They're simply a development of rules of the facility. The currently, the courts, I don't, I don't honestly, can't say what, what Judge Haney says here. But I've had many district court people over the years, and I've been doing this for, just started my twenty-eighth year. We had a period where judges wouldn't allow any weapons into the courtroom, including the deputies.
That's what I was, that was gonna be my next follow-up.
So, so my point is, is that we need to sit down and kind of have that full discussion. Now, what that all means and what the outcome of it is, I'm not gonna suggest now. I wanna get a full feel for that, from the judiciary and staff. You know, from you guys, from everybody. But I mean, these are important discussions to have now because you as a board are gonna be setting up policy for control of the doors, for control of weapons if necessary, you know, and so on and so forth. So, so I guess my point is, is we'll have, that'll be all part of this current phase. It's my ideal to have one person on during the last quarter of the existing fiscal year, so we can get that person onboard. Now, what that means, well, it's the last three months of the year. You know, let's figure out when that's going to be. And then sometime during the first or second quarter of the next fiscal to bring on the third person. I stretch that out a little bit further because I'm, you know, I gotta be honest with you. I've been talking to my peers. I've been talking to people.
And you gotta look for the right person.
Yeah, you do. And what John said is exactly right. They've gotta be people who can get along with people. They have to be people who, who understand people. They have to be people who, who, who understand what the obligation of, of being court security is. You know, a side note to McAllister, Jack's a unique individual. Jack is the highest, my number-one, number-one warrant writer in the county.
Does them right here.
Does them right here. Every day, every day, Jack goes ahead and does an assessment of the, of, of who's coming up for court tomorrow. He does it for security. That's what he started as.
Now, you're letting his secret out here, Ted.
You know, you know what, you know what? Good. I want him to know that.
We weren't gonna say that.
I, I, I hope so. You know what? Here's the thing. If you're listening and it's a secret going out, or you're gonna tell somebody, they need to tell them to get their butts up and go ahead. Otherwise, they just end up with another contempt charge. I don't care. Don't show up if you don't want. The bottom line on it is, is take care of your obligations. So, so that said, Jack does a great job. So, so I wanna get somebody who has that same mindset that Jack has. Go ahead, Dave.
You wanna get him in in the last quarter of this budget year?
Bring him onboard, hire him. Doesn't mean we have to start him.
Okay. Bring it, bring him onboard, but, because we, we didn't put anything in your budget for this fiscal year that ends June thirtieth.
Yeah, I, I think.
Unless you've, because you're back to full staffing now.
Yeah, but understand that I think the wages for court security comes on a general supplemental.
Okay.
Yeah, see what I'm saying? So, and I, and I don't think that the full amount of money that's budgeted for Jack will be used up. The, the big thing, let's get serious. There's, there's a simple, there's a process you gotta go through. Keep in mind, here's something else that, that people don't understand. These individuals must be trained on a regular basis. These individuals must sustain their, their certification. So we bring them on as reserve officers. We're going to shift the responsibility for those reserve officers to four hours of ride time. Currently, all reserve officers must do eight hours of ride time per month. So in cases of Jack or that particular, will be cut back to four, because frankly, they're dedicating awful lot of time anyway, albeit being paid. But they're already doing an awful lot of time for the county. So we're gonna do some shifting like that. But as far as obligations to be trained, to go to meetings, to do those things, Jack does that on, on his side now. You know what you see, Jack, here? That doesn't count for the eight hours a month he rides. That doesn't count for the two meetings a month he, he does. We don't pay him for that. He's a reserve officer, but that allows him to keep his weapons permit, to maintain his certification, to keep his training up, frankly. CPR, all the bloodborne pathogens, all the things that we have to do, that, that the civilian or even the, the other employees at courthouse don't understand. We have all those things we have to do. They receive about forty to fifty hours of training a mo, a year. That's what happens with our line of work. The full-timers get about sixty to seventy hours of training a year. You know, time on the range, time on, with TASER training, time with defensive tactics training, pepper spray training. All those things, you must be trained on a regular basis. So, so that's the difference here. All right? Beyond this phase, so those are the things that'll come together. And there's some other things that are probably, I'm slipping my mind right now, but we'll lay that all out for you, okay? Again, I want to know what you're gonna make public and what you're not. The public has no right or obligation to them to know what we do here for court security. They have no obligation for that. That's a federal law. It's totally different. My, my, my parameters of security as a sheriff is totally different than any obligation you have. If you can't meet that, then I won't share it with you.
I, I would say what we're gonna make public is simply, simply the fact that we're gonna control the, as you put it, the perimeter or the entrance.
Budget totals, things like that. I understand.
And the, and the north door is gonna be closed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Open, open, closed times?
Things that directly impact them.
Scheduling, right.
Things that directly impact them.
They don't need to know anything.
Oh, you know, that, that personnel's being brought onboard, their assurance that they're trained, assurance that they're capable, what the cost factors are involved, their accessibility, those type of things, I have no problem with, and I agree. Frankly, it makes our job easier. But, but as far as the details of what my report to you is gonna be, I, I would just as soon.
We can go into closed session on that.
All right, but you understand.
And, and part of the Iowa code, we can go into closed session on anything that has to do with, with security personnel matters or negotiations. And this is security and that.
But I wanna make sure that the people listening to streaming have a full understanding of that. And again, it's for their safety. It's for their safety.
We're not hiding anything, like you say.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It is for their safety.
Listen, we do stuff every day in my office that we just don't tell people because it's not their obligation, because it's made to protect them. That's what the reality of my job is versus another job. We're entrusted with that. We deal with enormous amount of secrets from, from everything from civil litigation to criminal litigation. So that, that's phase one. Phase two, as I see it, will have two different pathways. I talked about the high-end pathway. I actually have an idea that probably would, would, could be sustained at a lesser amount than what the high-end. I wanted to talk about that high-end, that, that quarter million dollars, two-hundred-thousand-dollar process. We'll see, once we get the phase, this next phase done, it's a series of baby steps. And then based on those steps, we'll be able to determine how far down the path we've gone and what we need to go from there.
But I think if we do this properly, and the three of us bodies work together between the Sheriff's Division, the Legislative Division, with, with us working that, and the Judicial Division, we can get assistance from the state on this. This, we could literally become the pilot program that other counties would be following.
You know, I'll, I'll make the cha, I'll, I'll make the challenge. I mean, I have no, either they're, either the, the state, and I mean the bodies of state, judiciary, executive, and legislative, either they're lying about their concern, or they step up to the plate. I'm not afraid to call them liars if they don't step up, in any of them.
The only pro, yeah.
In regards to the funding, you know, that, that's gonna determine on what the baby steps are taking.
Yes.
You know, how quickly we progress, you know, as, as we find out what, what assistance, state assistance we can have.
And, and funding-wise, we can only deal with the legislative body. The executive body, they took the judiciary budget away from the gubernatorial ability to veto or line item anything out of that years ago.
Yeah.
All that happens is the judicial budget comes from both houses, goes to the governor, and he signs it. He has no choice. So no matter what is in there, regardless of who is the sitting governor, whatever comes out of the Senate and the House, that gets signed.
But politically, putting pressure, as in this case currently, lead Republican or lead Democrat, those individuals can go to bat for us.
They can be, yeah.
And that, that's a big leveraging tool.
They can be the best lobbyist we have.
One, one, one last thing, if I could here. I would say, as far as a budget goes, when we look at full, full-time, excuse me, full staff of three part-timers, and what we really should earmark for this courthouse, I would say you're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And the reason I say that is there's gonna be cameras, there's gonna be things that we have to replace. Now, I'm under, I'm talking about full cost. By the time we, we pay for ninety hours per week, by the time we pay for uniforms, by the time we pay for training, I think for this, this initial phase, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, on a twenty-million-dollar budget, I, I guess it falls on your shoulders to determine whether that hundred thousand dollars is viable for you. How you come up with that, I don't honestly know. I don't know, I don't know what the total amount is from, you mentioned before about the fines that comes out of, through, through Jennifer. I know she's indicated, Jennifer and I have talked about a willingness to cover some costs. I know there's fines and, and fees that we get from housing. Again, as I said in the beginning, people who are sentenced to Marshall County Court, you know, they're our own people. So I, we need to sit down and see how much that offset of it is initially.
This is gonna take another, working with Jennifer. You know, we've, we've, we've talked with Jennifer at depth on this, this fine program that she's got with the collections of getting a twenty-eighty agreed with one more county and working to be their collection agency. We will get funds from that. We could literally get this program that is run through the attorney's office to have twenty-eighty agreements with several of our surrounding counties. We could fund our total security program out of this program that currently is run in our attorney's office that pays one-hundred percent of the individual salaries that are operating this program and puts money into the general fund. This, this literally is, Jennifer, for all intents and purposes, is actually running a business here. It more than hundred percent covers the cost of the employees and puts substantial dollars into our coffers.
Oh, absolutely.
We just wanna see where it goes.
Yeah, and, and I think it's important that, you know, when you're looking at those type of things, I think that where the burden is on your guys' shoulders is, do you wanna put that towards a, a bridge? Do you wanna put it to another statue out in front of the courthouse, or do you wanna put these, and really protect us against those individuals who are a threat to this courthouse and its people? I mean, that's where, that's where, I mean, it's a decision that you have to make.
You know, and I, I guess the, the, my thought is that the phase, the baby step, we'll, let's start calling it phase one. But phase one is having three Jack McAllisters on, in, in the courthouse. Phase two would maybe go to the lockdown of the, of the north door. And I know you wanna, you wanna have full say of it. It's either gonna be either or, or. But we, we've already established that we can be so efficient or effective. I don't wanna say efficient, but effective with, with, with Jack onboard as Judge Haney is saying, you know, other places don't even have it.
But, but, but Denny, when you say lockdown, my point of locking the north door is not to, to have a secure southern door. My, my lockdown is, is, is let them go out of it.
Right.
See, later on, a true lockdown, like what Judge Haney wrote about, means they don't go out of it.
Yeah.
So my point is, is I think for this phase one, it's important to make. So my point is, is I think for this phase one, it's important to maybe consider locking that door from outside to help us so when we do go to a pure lockdown, we're prepared. You see what I'm saying? Let them walk out the door to go in for now.
And there's gonna be a transition period. It's gonna be an education period and changing the habits of the public.
What you're, I just wanna clarify what you mean by lockdown.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Well, and, and I think there, you certainly wanna, uh, and my point is not to in any way limit accessibility in the courts or the courthouse offices, but just to provide, uh, some secure, uh, plans to implement the safety factors that I think we're dealing with. And even in the meantime, I, I, I had the opportunity when I was on a Story County rotation to, uh, take part in an Alice training program that they had over there for all the employees at the Story County courthouse. Now, uh, in the entire time I served as a magistrate here in Marshall County, I never had the opportunity to engage in any type of that training. It's very cost-effective, uh, it can be done, uh, by several of Ted's staff who are probably already certified in that area and come in in each department and spend a half day doing this training that helps, uh, each department become more aware, uh, self-sufficient in terms of security issues and know what to do when there are dangerous situations, volatile situations, active shooter situations that they may encounter. It was an eye-opening training for me. I know it's very cost-effective and it appears to be the wave within your organizations in terms of training churches, uh, public entities and the like.
We have talked about the Alice Training Officer Veren. Uh, Deputy Veren gave, gave a very good presentation. Uh, Judge Elifson was here during that, as was the county attorney, and all our department heads, and it is something we have looked at.
You, you know, I wanna, I wanna expand on that if I could, when you bring it up. Um, we, we, last year we gave a dozen Alice trainings we were participating in. Um, and, and, uh, schools predominantly. Uh, I think it's paramount that, that the staffs here, the department heads in this age, this building here, I'll just say this building for now. Um, understand too that there's gonna be a commitment on their part, and I'm talking about the department heads. Uh, one of the things that we got pushed back from was, you know, you can't do that when your doors are open to really have a viable training session. They're just gonna have to accept the fact that they're going to have to come up here off-hours and we'll set training up for them.
And that, that was our trouble, John.
Well, Story County did a wonderful job in that they created a morning session and an afternoon session, and the staff rotated so they didn't have to close any of the courthouse offices. And they did a, a very nice four-hour morning session, a very nice four-hour afternoon session. Each department signed up and organized it, their department heads organized their staffing accordingly. And it, it, it was an outstanding training, and I frankly, I would recommend that that training take place on an annual basis. You've got people who rotate in and out. It's, it's cheap.
And I, and I understand that.
It's really a no-brainer in terms of cost-effectiveness to educate your employees what to do in those high-risk situations, and it really creates great awareness. And, and I, I mean, like I say, you can schedule a day of that training, a morning session and an afternoon session once a year, uh, and, and I think it'll have great benefit while you're looking at and implementing some of these other phases and strategies.
Yep. Point, point noted.
One thing, one thing that we could do here at the courthouse. It, it's difficult because true Alice training, we, we have to go ahead and, and, we, we should train in your environment. That means that, that room's gonna be shut down, because we wanna tell you where you're gonna go, how you're gonna do it, how you're gonna react. What's it look like to have somebody come through your door? You see, versus talking about it. So that's true Alice training. Um, we could do it by floor if we did it during a days, for instance, or, or after hours. But what we need, we, we just need the commitment from the department heads. That's the bottom line, and we won't go into that any further.
And you know, scheduling is, it gets to be a little bit of a frustration from us. We can't even get this, the state and the court system to get on the same, same calendar as we are. There's all kinds of days when.
And they'll, they'll argue that they won't get it, we won't get on their, their calendar.
They're in our house.
Yeah, I know. It's a courthouse.
Yeah. Then they can pay the bills. But you know, that, that, there's just a host of problems like that.
Um, I hope we've addressed your phase one.
Yes.
I think so.
Um, I, I hope we've touched on beyond that point. Um, I'm glad, I wanna thank you again publicly for, for the commitment that you guys have given. Um, you two have been here during that whole process, and, and our newest member of the board obviously wasn't here during that process, but your guys' commitment's important to this. Um, I, I, I wanna go ahead and say that, once we put it together, uh, once we get the people at least selected, once we kinda get that going, we'll be back in touch on a regular basis with both the courts yourselves and the department heads to, to fine-tune it, to buff it if you will. Um, and ultimately, uh, we'll, we'll make sure that this grand old building stays safe and secure for the public. That's the biggest and most important factor.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Anything else?
Uh, other than the fact that I know you and I and our newest board member, we are committed to not kicking this can down the road. We're, we're gonna start this.
Vertus, you got any comments? You're doing a public here, uh, no comments.
I have comments for the secondary road, uh, some of those things.
Well, we, we can address that when we get Paul in here sometime.
Well, the reason, and, and I would just like to.
Okay, before, before we get into public forum, Mike, we have one more item.
Yes, please.
We need to see with Ted.
Yes.
And John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, and we'll, we'll all get communicated on this.
Thank you very much.
Before you, before you head out, how's the kid?
Huh?
Is he, yes, he's back in country.
That's right.
Forgot that.
Oh, is that right?
By the way, that's a hell of a job for us.
Of course, it was his former coach that got him to be the.
Hey, now, we don't.
You did a great job, John.
I don't have room.
We were partners.
Dan don't have room, and I don't have room for this, two big, two big guys talking to one another, so. Well, we're still on.
Yes.
Um, I need that, I sent you that one email about, uh, we need a safety representative from the sheriff's department.
Yeah, sheriff's office.
Uh, from the sheriff's office, excuse me, I didn't mean it. But, uh, our, you know.
For work comp.
For work comp.
Yep.
And all the other departments have got it.
Okay, I, I, I.
That's what I, I didn't, I didn't, wasn't addressing Cilipree Street.
No, no, I, no, I, I forwarded that to, to Joel and to Steve, just saying your thoughts on it, and frankly, I didn't talk to them about it. I just got back yesterday. So, when I go back today, I'll, I'll give you some.
We gotta get that, cause we're really getting cleaned up.
You'll, you'll get it this afternoon.
From a work comp issue.
If nothing else, just call Bobby Schomo and.
Okay, but, but you'll definitely get somebody this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, no problem with that. Is that it?
That's it.
Yep.
Now, Vertus, this is.
Public comments.
Public comment.
I'll step over.
You can either sit down and, and use the microphone if you'd like.
Oh, I don't need a microphone, I don't think.
Well, if you wanna hear, I have other people.
I, I'm looking forward to having the sheriff's office back in the courthouse. Have the sheriff and, uh, maybe a secretary and a deputy, uh, who's the first deputy probably if the sheriff's gone, right in the courthouse. Yeah, you, used to be there was sheriff's office was in the courthouse. And, and, uh, may, maybe that's what we should have.
You'd have to put an addition on it.
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need addition in this courthouse. There's, there's all kinds of room, you know, all, Cupola was still open. Have you ever been up there?
A few thousand times, yeah.
Yeah, you're way up, way up.
Yeah, I know, I've looked at it.
Bungee jumping on Fridays.
But, hey, anyway, there's, there's room here. You, you can make room.
Alright, point taken on that one.
That's one of the.
That's one of them. What's your second one?
Okay, the second one is, uh.
Put the microphone closer so they can hear you.
Oh, well, I can yell at you. I don't think it's working. I, I don't hear.
It goes, it goes, you're being streamed live over the whole, to the whole world.
Uh, I, I look, I, I look forward to, uh, having our desecrated, uh, entrance to the cemetery fixed this summer. Uh, probably sooner this spring.
Have you talked to Brad or to Paul?
I've, I've visited with Paul.
She says get your, get it closer to you, cause she, there's, there's the one. I told you she'd be here.
Well, good, that's good enough.
Closer to you.
Yeah, always the women always watch me, but, uh, that's, that's okay. And, and it's, uh, I think the paper had said, uh, he wanted to haul a lot more rock and, and, uh, back, uh, some years ago that they used, used to haul rock. The county hauled all the rock.
Well, we're, we're looking, we're looking at adding a couple pup trailers so we can, we can spot, we can spot on the road when, when we need to.
Yeah, you know, it's very costly when you start hiring, uh, those kinda things. Uh, you, you can check with the state DOT and find out that actually. That would not be very, very, uh, worked out very good. Uh, the other, the other thing, uh, is, uh, putting up, fixing the bridge on North Center Street, you know, or out that way. Uh, I, I can remember when the city used to be the city limits, and when they had to have the, the bridges that are constructed there, the city moved their limits back up so they wouldn't have to build a bridge. And now it's the same thing, it's started over again. I, I don't, uh, I don't see that being very cost-effective either.
Wow, something, please.
And number two, uh, prices for, uh, the road dust control past, uh, individuals' property, okay? Uh, it's gotten so high that really it should be cut, cut, because, uh, lignite is a lot cheaper, uh, and, and I'm sure the other, uh, stuff that can come. It, it should be brought back down to, uh, accessibility con, uh, you know, it got too costly.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see, what else? Oh, the Highland Park Road, you know, the city was gonna reimburse the county for some of that money. Have they, have you had some of that money coming in?
The Highland Park?
Highland Acres?
No, Highland Acres Park, excuse me, Acres, Highland Acres Road. Uh, the city was gonna pay for half of that.
I believe the contractual portion of that was taken care of. That's been several years.
That was, yeah, when Royce was still here.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Has money come back?
Yes, that was, that was done when, when Royce was still here. I remember he was, he wanted to make sure that was all cleaned up before he left.
Yes.
So, we got her.
Way before us, but we know it was done.
Good, good for Royce. Glad to see that he done that. Because, uh, I, I wanted to know, be sure, cause I've never seen anything, uh.
Yeah, it was all.
Published, published, or, uh, I can look over the budget. I think your budget hearing could be in the evenings. Like, annual budget should be sometime in five o'clock.
You know, we've, we've, we've tried that, Vertus. We even have tried taking our supervisors' meetings around to the neighboring towns. The last one we did, we took a supervisor's meeting down to the city of Laurel. You know who showed up?
The supervisors.
The supervisors.
Well, good. Well, we did.
We advertised the Dickens out of it and absolutely nobody comes.
Nobody was.
In, in the five years I've held office, I have not seen one single member of the general public come to any of our budget meetings.
Do they, do you count the annual budget?
Any of the, even, even the department budget meetings or the annual budget meeting, nobody has ever showed up. Not one single person.
I, I've seen this room full.
So would we.
Only when they're mad at us.
Effective government requires active participation, and absolutely nobody comes and says anything.
Then, the, the other thing I, I noticed, uh.
Wrap it up.
I'm trying to think of the department that, uh, is having, they have their annuals meeting, uh, at seven o'clock in the morning and sometime in February.
Okay.
Extension, extension office. That's, that's a little bit, who gets up at, uh?
We're up.
I do too.
Five o'clock.
Are you there?
Huh?
Are you there at the meeting?
I, I went there to the meeting and I'll be a son of God, I was the only person there, and they didn't even show up.
Vertus, there's time, at times it's, you're the only person that counts. You know, so that's what's important.
That's part of Ted's job, is he calls Danny and I at five o'clock every morning to make sure we're up.
I call him at five o'clock.